We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your mother for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
So we have the interview scheduled for Emily Kingham at seven, so whenever we get to that point or close, we almost stop on the agenda and go to that item. And then Dave is not here tonight, but he said he's going to remote in and listen in to hear what's going on. And then we'll make a decision after that, how we're gonna move forward. Dave said let us know his feelings after he listens in. We have two minutes, one from the last regular meeting and then one from the special meeting. Are there any additions, changes? Or do I have a motion to approve of them?
Can't get mine to come up right now, but I think there was a few typos in there, Sarah.
Okay.
So just have her look that over.
Look it over, okay.
I don't know why my computer isn't working.
Should be, you should have an agenda in your packet too. You should have... Oh wait, you don't have the meeting minutes in there.
That's why I'm trying to pull it up here.
Do you want me to scroll down so you can see it?
No, I read it already, but I'm just thinking, I know that there was something.
Just remarquable not. Just remarquable changes.
Okay, I'll have her look at it. Okay, if you think of it, just let us know.
If it don't work, shut it off and restart. I don't think I've ever shut this thing off.
Do I have a motion then?
With the changes.
Marquable changes?
Yes.
Moved by Paul, is there a second?
Paul's second.
Second by Jason. Any other discussion? Saying none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Next, we have the presentation of the bills. Is there any questions or changes? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Jason, is there a second?
I'm second.
Seconded by Paul. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Next, we have the disconnect.
I'm pissed off at because I don't see... That's the fiber. There you go. Too many papers.
Nobody's sitting next to him?
Would you? About empty promise, get guy all excited? I moved the disconnected. That Jim with us.
Oh gosh.
Motion dies. Now that you have it, Paul, anybody like to make a motion to approve the disconnects?
Is it just the ones on the front here?
Yep.
Yep.
And the other pages is the ones that were, are late.
I'll make a motion.
Nicole makes a motion to approve the disconnect. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jason to approve the disconnect list. Is there any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Next, we have vision report. We'll start with Nicole.
I have nothing this time around.
Jason?
I have nothing.
Paul?
Nothing. Except for what Tommy did.
Are you sure?
Do you have an agenda? I've got three of them, no. Because I got my computer to come online finally.
Oh my gosh.
Funding and zoning met last Monday, and they, I think all of you seen some of the information that they're going through to try to help our residents figure out as far as what the criteria for fences and building and everything. And hopefully those documents, when they get finalized, will help you guys understand it. But just so that you're aware that that is going on, I think all of you have seen it, or about it sent to all of you. They did, because we've now had a couple of things that came up. And JR's looking at a couple of them for us, or for them. They said on cargo containers or shipping containers, they should only be in resident, are only in commercial zones, not in residential zones. And then whatever is facing towards the public or towards somebody else's, where somebody would see, that would have to be covered by some type of building material. So if it was facing the neighbor's yard, if it was next to a residential, it has to be outside. So if it's facing toward a street, it has to also have a fence or some other means of covering it.
Can you give an example, like the shipping container, like becomes like a full-size shed, like I'm not understanding?
Shipping container has like the one that's sitting.
Okay, but I mean, is it because of the size of it?
Something to make it look a little bit nicer, because not all of them are painted, or not all of them come. When they come, they're just all over the place, so they wanted to make it standard, about you. Go about that. And then they also asked about, on property lines, to have an agreement of some sort with the neighboring property, if you're going to put a fence on the property line. There should be something turned in so that there is an agreement down in the future, if needed, that at that time, that owner allowed them to put a fence on the line and maintain it. If there isn't that turn-in, then they're looking at basically 24 inches or above the width of a push mower, one more width, is what they looked at. That isn't finalized, that's just what they're kind of looking at right now. Questions on that? Beautification also met last Monday, and we have an artist in town that is willing to do a mural for you guys to approve. They thought about having it out on this wall right over here between City Hall. It'd be on the, on the community center, but it'd be on the wall facing City Hall, so it'd be that short wall. They figured he could do it for $600 or less. The only thing he's asking for is just the materials to do it. And then they can pass around the design that he looked at. He just didn't want it going out because they're not published art yet. And it would be in color. This is just a sketch.
Is it kind of one of those views where they can stand in front of it and it kind of makes the whole picture of the human on that rope going up?
We could ask them to do that, yep.
I think if you want something too pristine, a picture would be great. Like stand in front of it and get that picture and kind of encapsulate what's behind them. Does that make sense?
Would that be the request, is have it so they can stand there?
It's up to the residents, but I think they would enjoy that. I think you would give them more people.
I did wash it on Sunday, just to make sure that if we did approve it, that he could start working on it. He said he could, if we had it ready to go and we approved it, that he could start on it this week. It was dry and to get the paint and everything that he needed. Like I said, it would be, he figured 600 or less is just basically for the paint supplies. So if you want to know when we get to that point of it, what it looks like if, when we clean the building, like that side of the building, how the pressure washer came on. So if you'd like to move forward, or that we just need a motion to approve that?
Do we think on what fund that was?
It could come out of sales tax, or there's still some left, you know, general fund out of that special commission, or president commission, president, the commission fund. If you don't want to finalize on the actual drawing or draft, we can look at that later too.
I'm so sorry about the packet. Sorry about the packet. What the heck? I'm sorry about the packet not opening. The packet is not opening on your...
And here's the sheriff's setting. Thoughts?
I'm all for doing it, but I want to see a final, I want to see what they're doing before I'll approve anything. So I was starting to get a motion forward with him doing the drawing. I'm okay with that, but I want to see a final draft before we start to work.
Do you want, would you be okay making the motion to do that with us pending the approval of the final?
Yes, I would.
I would second that.
Okay, so approve with pending the final draft or whatever it looked like. Properly moved by Paul, seconded by Nicole. Is there any other discussion? If not, Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Eric Johnson is the local artist that is going to be doing that. He's also on the beautifications. It did get one bid in for fresh washing. I have not gotten another one in yet. I'm still waiting back to hear from him. That one was for both buildings, was $5,000. It was about $2,500 for each one. He didn't say that that building over there, we'd see more of an off factor than these two. And that one was with Steve Maddick. That is all I have. So we'll keep going since we're not quite there. So Jim?
I have nothing tonight.
JR?
Nothing for me.
Sarah?
The only thing I have is PSN and Banyan are having some, like, communication issues back and forth, and there's been some batches of payments that have not come through to PSN. So there's been late bills that have been sent out to customers that have already paid their bill, but it wasn't showing over in Banyan, but it was showing in through PSN, so we're working on getting that solved. So if you have paid your bill and you received a red card from us, just give us a call and we'll look into it. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I, so nothing from the sheriff's office today. Nothing from Steve. Beautification tickets. At the last beautification meeting, the... They did approve to move forward, or that the property for 201, for ticket number 2021004 should be asked to be charged again. So if you're okay with that, we could go ahead and head with the motion, ask the sheriff's department to... And then they also, while you're deciding on ticket 2822002, they asked to reach out to that property owner again. Because they had communicated that they were going to do something this summer and had to finish by July to get the trees moved out, but that hasn't happened, so they asked to see them come back again. What is the commission mission on 2021004?
What was the address of them?
That one is 103 Fourth Street, Northeast.
This is another new charge?
Correct.
Is this prior to other charges?
There is other bed charges. There's still more stuff being done. What's there reasoning behind it? I do see the property owner is here tonight. If you want to listen to her, she did not ask to appear but ahead of time.
I haven't drove by the last couple of days. I'm not exactly sure what it looks like. Last time I was by it, it needed some help.
I'm conflicted because it's a continuous, so I don't know how we resolve this. I feel like take it, clean up, goes back, take it, clean up, goes back. I just don't know where this process is.
You have to remember that the other ones haven't went through yet. So it only affected on when the sheriff's office and check goes to look at it. If it was violation on that day, then they would be charged for that day only, not... Like I said, the hope was is that they would understand that as they get charged, it's $1,000 each time, and that they would get it cleaned up.
When was the last charge? It's been since, since?
It's been since the last beautification meeting. So it's been a month, at least, if not two.
Was it been in court then, or?
I think it's in December, if I remember right, but I think that one might be from the previous one. If I remember right. This would be the third charge. Since the first conviction.
So after the charge, does the charge stick even if it's cleaned up?
What's that?
If they get charged, but if they clean it up, does it still stay as a charge?
Then they would have to appear in court, and Charlie has said that he would go in whatever recommendation we make. I've kind of been on the stance where we've went before with other properties, if they get it cleaned up, then we would drop the charges.
I guess I'm okay with there's a charge out there right now that they don't, because I haven't looked at it recently, so. I'm sorry.
I have a deeper.
Do you want to hear from the property owner tonight?
If you want to talk. If you ask conservative questions of us, it'll be a good time.
I'd ask you to come up to the podium.
I guess like, I know that there's some trailers there that I'm loading when I'm in town. I understand that they're going to be moved, but other than that, I guess I don't know Levi what, what are we going to do?
As we've said before, when my pack came out, what's on the sidewalk needs to go, anything that's going to harbor pests, anything like that. Also, we've talked about since that time that anything that is in the alleyway has to go. There is stuff in the alleyway. We have crept over past your property line, and so anything that's past that, 140 feet, has to go.
I think it was 160 or 170 feet.
It's 140.
I guess the person that wheeled it off, I think, said it was more, it was one of the bigger blocks. And then basically, in the middle, five and a half feet on my property, it was pretty much right on me.
You can't go from the middle of the road, you have to go from wherever the pin is at, because the road is not the way it looks, and by the other end is not where it's supposed to be. So it's 140 feet from the, according to what is recorded, it's a 140-foot lot. And the city has a 20-foot easement in the middle.
Right.
I shouldn't say easement, it's actually city.
Right, but when they wheeled it off and then counted the five feet, five and a half feet back, it was on...
Who wheeled it off?
Cody, I believe.
Cody, I understand.
How long do those trailers usually sit in their sunshine?
I've been loading, loading on my stuff that was in the yard and went on, and then I'm gone. So anyway, I just, I'm, I'm, okay, I'll have it done by, here shortly after, before summer's over, I should say snow. But that's where I'm at with it. But other than the trailers, I would just like to know from Levi what else it is who has done, because it just seems to go on and on and on, you know, and I've talked to you about it, Cody about it, so.
I'm doing the special of the beautification mission. This is not me saying exactly what you're doing is wrong.
Well, I'm asking you what more you want done, uh, did the trailers removed?
What we said before, where you don't have trailers parked in, just junk parts, or stuff parked in your driveway. And stuff passed onto the, onto the street or into the sidewalk.
So there's nothing on the sidewalks, on the driveway, you're saying can't have what?
You're not supposed to be parking a whole bunch of stuff on there and leaving it forever like you had in the past, is what they had asked you to move.
I believe that there's a car there, but...
I've been buying it a little bit, there's a car there that's... If that's what we're talking about, that's in the driveway, again, I still see it. That's, that's getting a little ridiculous. If we're trying to tell people which cars can and cannot be in the driveway if they're drivable. I don't believe it was a car. I think what, in the past, it's been a trailer and a tent and...
Okay, but that's in the past. It seems to me that you keep bringing up stuff that's been, you know, way back.
So what is in your driveway today?
A wheel.
And that's it?
Well, depending on what you're talking about, I mean...
What is in your driveway today, if that's what I'm asking?
A grill, a tent, a car.
There you go, a tent, which what I just said, I just said the tent, which you said is in...
And I just heard you say that you can't have them now, right? If they're facing the street, so I'll take it now. Did I get that right?
You have been told that before. I do think if she's showing up here and asking her what we want done, I think as a city, we should come up with a list that says this needs to go, so that she understands what we're asking for. Specific lists that's agreed on by the commission would be my thoughts.
Do we have something from the beautification committee on what that is?
Because I think that, as far as I don't know, unless leave my nose, but I think from that point, it also helps us as a city. So if we come back here and we notice, you know, something that we'd asked for to be gone and it's not gone, we can specifically say to, and take to the courts, this is what we asked you to have gone that's still here. Correct me if I'm wrong, but a driveway is supposed to be used for parking vehicles in different places. So that's what should be in the driveway, correct? That's what the beautification commission had talked about before, is that there was stuff in there that was pretty much permanent. There had been in there for a long time, so vehicles, you know, it was, whether it's a tent, there was a trailer parked there, there was all wood stacked on it. That's the stuff that they're asking to be moved. And at one time it was cleaned up, and then it got put back on. And I think too, in that aspect, if we have a list, we have it documented, if anything comes back, it's going to make it clear, easy for us to say, this was asked to be removed, you put it back on, now we're not problem again. Right, and that was on the original list, was those things that were in there. I can't tell you exactly. I can't tell you exactly who came into it, but that was one of the things that was on the original list. We also said the stuff that went on to the neighbor's property at the time. Because that neighbor had asked us to get stuff moved off.
Now, that was what I was going to ask, is this a neighbor in, like, is this somewhere where the neighbor calls and doesn't like the fact that it's on the property the way it is because it's cluttered, messy, in the way? I don't... I think the list would be a good idea.
If we can go back and get a list.
What it is.
We definitely get a list together for, at the next meeting.
Yeah, and I think that both you and Jason should go and do that, because James, Jason seemed like he's got a little different take on it. So that way between the two of you, you would be able to...
Well, it's not my list, it's the beautification that does the rest.
Right, I don't, you have that list of the beautification, right?
I will, yeah.
My big thing for me, this has always been, what I do for a living is, we got to treat people fair, so I want to make sure that we're not, that we're, if somebody comes and asks, we can just tell them, hey, give what we need done.
Okay, but Jason, you also have to understand that this is not the first time, this is not the second time.
And that's why I think this will help.
And this is not the 15th time that we've dealt with this property.
But I also have a...
Would that help you Sasha, if there was something new?
It would, because it just seems like it just continues on and on and on. I mean, it is, yeah, frustrated about it all too still.
Well, it continues on and on and on because you keep putting stuff back in there.
And did you hear what I said? You did have it cleaned up, and then you put stuff back on there.
Right, and I was still going through some stuff when my garage just broke down.
That's what we're looking, look, look.
What we're looking at is this, we want, whatever we determined that we should have cleaned up, we don't want it cleaned up one week and then two months later it's back there again. That's, it seems like the revolving what we're having here. How we resolve that, I have no idea.
And the other thing is, is when we sent stuff out, we asked people to appear. And that didn't happen in the beginning. You are coming, you are coming now, you weren't on the list for today, or we didn't know about you coming. But in the beginning, you had letters, you've gotten things, and we've gotten no communication. We, that is the part that we ask people to come in so they can talk to the whole beautification commission or the city commission so that it's not just one person making a decision, it is the full, everybody on both of them. But at times, you did not always come. So when you get the last two that we asked you to appear about, never did come. Just stating some facts Sasha, and asking you, asking you in the future, if you get a letter to please come.
I'm making a letter, I'll come.
Okay. And we have served them because to make sure that you do get them. Anything else? Okay, thank you Sasha.
Did you say David was calling in, or you were calling David?
No, he was gonna watch on the TV.
Okay, so you can ask his questions.
I was just gonna send a message because we haven't heard from Emily yet. All right, moving on. Next item, uh, we go to his old business, we have Joel come and talk to us about the cybersecurity grant.
Says Dean on here, is that right?
What's that?
Says Dean.
Yeah.
That's easy.
All right, thank you very much for, you know, giving me a few minutes tonight to talk about the grant and maybe a few other things. I think I know everyone here except maybe, I hope I met Nicole, J.R., I've talked to them. Just everybody back there I think I've met at one time in my life and maybe helped out. Just do a little introduction to start with, maybe. Again, I'm Joe Kramer with Remark Technology Consulting. I started Remark in about 2004. I provide IT services to small and midsize companies like the City Hillsborough. And as large as up to 150 people, so I've been doing this for a while. Prior to that, I worked for the North Dakota Association of Counties. Did IT work in all 53 county courthouse in the state of Dakota. As far as the city, I think I've been coming here spreading out. Spent two decades, not quite two decades, but some, working as commissioners. Proud to be working with the fifth auditor coming up here, Mark Forsa nicely, Matt, Ashley. Appreciate it, working with everyone. It was good to, it was good to build the relationships over the years, maintain those, I appreciate it. I think over that entire time, I maybe lost one client that I had to fire. Which weren't getting along, if that happens. One thing I'm proud of is I never had a security threat and a ransomware threat to any one of my clients. Going to City Hillsborough, Trail County, medical clinic with 15 doctors, no threats. I kind of take care of the networks like they were my own, basically. Kept them safe. So anyway, we're here tonight to talk about the cybersecurity grant, a couple other things. And maybe we can get started with that. Got a handout for everyone, if anyone wants to pass those around. Everyone?
Yes, yes.
Anyways, it's kind of a, that was probably a good part of the good, just an introduction to get to know everyone, let you know what I do. I kind of like this K-Fan show, it's called The Good Bad and the Ugly on Mondays. I don't know if anybody ever listens to it, but it's kind of a cool show. They go through the good and then they talk about some bad, and then they say, well, what's the ugly? So we're gonna kind of do that a little bit here tonight. 2023 grant application, it's due next Thursday, not this coming Thursday. In 2023, the state cybersecurity grant has $4.6 million available to local governments, cities and counties. You have a 48-month period to use those grants. So in other words, if you apply by next Thursday, the 28th, 5:00 PM, you get approved, you got four years to use that grant. Their priorities are a cybersecurity maturity assessment, meaning an outside consultant comes in and assesses your network. Make sure you're a visiting IT person's doing their job. And then they're going to recommend improvements, that's the way it should work. Hardware and software improvements are covered. Vulnerability management, which is multi-factor authentication, meaning that you just can't log on to your computer with using your password, you need a code from your phone or a text message, we've had that set up here. And then cybersecurity awareness training, and that's something we maybe need to do a little better at the City of Hillsborough. In other words, we conduct phishing incidents, or make it look like phishing incidents. And if you click on them, and you have to go through this training again. So all of this could be covered under this grant. And there's so much more, I'm just talking about technology, we're talking about server replacements, we could replace tablets, maybe get a little bigger one for Paul, you know, turns on a little faster, see the screen a little better.
Can you promise?
And then...
You're not gonna be like Jim over there.
No, it's okay, anything technology related that is sort of end of life, for instance, or that can improve your security infrastructure. Now, that doesn't mean it has to be all internal. We have an approval across the street at the social services to put in cameras inside and outside in the common areas. Keyless entries into your, your buildings, those are just a few examples, those are beyond my scope. My suggestion would be for any grant, this one going forward, is use somebody that's experienced in grant writing. I'm not experienced, I'm experienced with specking the IT piece of things, but not writing a grant. If you want me to write your grants, I probably wouldn't do a good job at it, honestly. So anyway, I bring that up because we have to make some decisions by Thursday, 5:00 AM, 28th. Now, if we go to number two, the 2022 grant application. With help of Ashley, Ben and I, applied and got approved for grants of $12,500. It's really not a lot of money, it is, but it isn't. The 2022 grant requires a 10% cost share. So in other words, if you get approved for $12,500, the city has to put in $1,250. And of that $1,250, the state of North Dakota will pay 5%, if it's 5 point, whatever, the numbers are in there, 4.55%. So the 2022 grant, it's just really a no-brainer, it's how do you want to use that money is the bottom line. Now, I'm gonna admit, we didn't apply for enough. We should have applied for more, but we learned from that mistake, apply for more in 2023, right? We applied to replace the server and some networking equipment. Everyone thought the $12,500 would be enough, well, it wasn't. We went to the state bidders list, contacted High Point Network. Networks in Fargo was on the state cooperative bidding list, they came back with a recommendation, it's $19,282. Now that includes the file server, all the software necessary, immutable backups, cloud backups, all included. So let's just say we went with that $19,282 bid, minus the $12,500, $0.6782. You get your infrastructure rebuilt for the year. Keep in mind, your existing server, August 2015, that's good and it's bad. The bad is, it needs to be replaced. The good is, look how long it lasted. We spec the right equipment, eight years, most places, if you get three to five years, you're doing well. Any questions on the first two items, and then item three is where we really need to kind of dig in and the commission kind of needs to make some decisions here.
I have a question for number two, is that also, you have four years to use that grant? When the 2022 grant was approved for that $12,500, is that to be used over a four-year period?
I believe it's, it's somewhere in the end of 2025, November 2025. I would already use those funds either.
And can you use those funds along with whatever's granted for 2023? Use them for the same things, or do they have to be for what grants?
Can't, can't. We asked the question to Debbie at the state, okay, we didn't apply for enough grant money. Can we apply for what we didn't apply for in '23, '22, and she says no. But we could change the scope. So in other words, you have this $12,500. We could replace your desktop computers, add some wireless access points, replace your network switch. And we talked about in the office, moving away from desktop computers, go to docking stations, laptops. Because at times if you can move around based on, you know, somebody's in or out, the front desk needs to be manned. So that's kind of our recommendation, is to kind of move away from the desktop model and go to a laptop model with docking stations, and they're universal. So you can take one laptop, dock it in the front desk, take it to the back, dock it there, it can work wherever. And you could even bring it along over here and, you know, commission people to use that, so.
How old are the desktops that we have now?
Oh, I have to look that up, I do have that here somewhere, but they're, they're, I think around six years old.
So they're end of life?
Well, they're all end of life, the servers end of life, the desktops are end of life. And so everything needs to be replaced, and I think you can make all of this happen in the next six months regardless, and get most of it covered. When I say most, I mean the 10%, you're gonna lose this here in 20% next year, minus the states, 4.55%. So what can we do? We could do nothing, return the grant, won't do that. Could accept the grant for $12,500, pay the difference of the $0.6782 towards your server replacement with the existing state bidders. Bid from High Point, that's what we... You could scale back the hardware a bit, you know, we save a few dollars, I like that idea. We could also get more bids, you know, and see what comes in. The tough part is, the lowest bid might not be the best solution always, if that makes sense. You might get someone coming in with a bid of $10,000. Is it the best for the accounting, I mean the city, sorry? Probably not, they cut the corners somewhere. So any, I guess any thoughts, I mean, you don't need to make a decision tonight, but we should make one before too long, number one. We're going to apply for a server project in 2023, just skip it right now. We need to do a change of scope on the grant application that was approved for Ashley.
Joe, did you happen to, for the desktops that they do have with the docking stations and laptops, did you happen to come up with a quote for what that replacement cost would be?
I can give you a rough estimate, you know, the docking stations would be roughly in that $300 area for a Thunderbolt. And I think you'd need three. Higher at laptop, you're gonna be in that 15 range, 15 to, just roughly 15 to 18 range.
Uh, solid state drives or?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. We would spec these laptops out for the last at least five years, basements.
Perfect.
And again, you're not buying laptops or software from Remark. I'm only providing consulting services to the city, I don't meld in the hardware and software business just because it kind of violates the integrity of the contract.
And then dual monitors, I believe you guys have duals now?
I have duals and, you know, there, I think there's some cabling issues over at City Hall. We might be able to utilize those funds to have a certified cabling person, maybe also a telephone, keep the local, I mean, and test the cabling. You have a network switch that needs to be replaced or two. Those are like $500 items, or 500 to 1,000, depending on the model, throughput that is needed. And you could even look at replacing your firewall, which I think is end of life in 2025. You know, that might be stretching it to include that.
Yeah, because I'm thinking if you're changing to laptop style, the new ones usually don't come with the CD-ROM drives and they usually are HDMI and even some VGA, so it'd be nice to know what that laptop is to connect to those duals. You know, I'm thinking they're probably going to need new monitors, but...
Yeah, they, the Thunderbolts that I'm talking about, for instance, they have various connectors in the back for the monitors. And then the laptop just connects up with them, I mean...
So there's a multi?
Yeah.
That is nice.
Again, that's, I don't know who's on that committee, but that might be something that we can, you know, get together after meeting with the... but that might be something that we can, you know, get together after meeting with the recommendation from the commission. I don't know how you want to move forward, but. We're kind of under the gun for timing, you know, to change the scope. Take a day or two, get that approved and reset it for the dollar amount of the, what was to be used in 2022. We don't need actual, but we need to know what we want to apply for in 2023. And I visited with Bob Henderson. Bob Henderson is the head of IT at Cass County and he sits on the committee. And then I've gone through a few of these sessions with him and he said, you know, apply high. Should we put a moment really? Somebody's gonna get the funds, so City of Hillsborough, may as well, may as well get your share.
What do you think for the amount of 2023 would be a good amount for applying for?
For sure, the $19,282 unless there's another bid. Again, I only, I only would work to get one bid. Because they were on the state bidders list, they were supposed to be the lowest price. I don't know if they are or not.
Is there any other equipment outside the desktops that you feel is what would need replacement as far as technology is concerned?
Not at this, not at this time. Scanners are working fine, you know, the copiers under contract. The only thing I would consider is maybe bring, again, I know Ben did the work over at the courthouse and for social services and they were really successful in getting their projects completed. I don't know if we want to use key fobs for doors. If you want to look at security or entry a little better over at the, at City Hall, you know, that's beyond my scope. You kind of need a security assessment to figure out what you'll need there.
I was just thinking cameras at the, help me out here. By the shop there, right? You talked about security cameras earlier this year. So I'm thinking of all the conversations that we've had throughout the year where we may not have correct server security features in place. So when you said cameras earlier, it kind of sparked a thing of, you know, cameras and entries and stuff, but. I think we gotta vote for that. I don't know, I don't know. We discussed it.
We talked about it, but I think we actually gotta vote. And I think one of the contractors that is really good at doing that, who is it again now? Electro Watchman.
Yeah, they're pretty low.
Yeah, and then also Holstead. They've done some really nice security projects over the years, so. Maybe want to get, you know, I could coordinate that, get Holstead to come in and give me some ideas and go from there.
And then, Joe, real quick, when you did the 2022 grant application, so I'm reading in here paragraph two of the cybersecurity grant application portion of, if the project is between $10,000 and $150,000, you must obtain minimum breakwalls and obtain approval from NDDEs before you pick the contractor's solutions. Because I don't know if that was part of the 2022 requirement, but if we go with that amount for 2023, I'm assuming you would have to get three quotes then for that?
Only if they're not on the cooperative state bidding list. You can get three in any quotes. And one of those might be that cooperative company that's on the list too. And again, you could get as many bids as you'd like.
I just want to make sure that it's a requirement of that grant that we would kind of follow right now. I'll leave the other ones for any questions.
Oh, I have one more point with the grants. 2022 is 10%, 23 is 20. 2024, I believe it goes up another cost share percent to 30, and then it goes to 40, and the last year is 50. So the earlier you replace, the more you're gonna get $30.
Is there a limit on what you can apply for? Or why are we not looking at what we need and applying for that? Can somebody clear that up? If we need something, if there's something you feel we need, then it's $30,000. We cannot apply for that, or we can't?
That's exactly right. We've kind of identified what needs to be replaced at City Hall. I think one of the, again, the decisions that needs to be made today is, do we want to do a change of scope in the grant? But we can't, we can't get more than $12,500 this year, because that's all we applied for. Next year, though, you can get 30, you can get 50, you might get 100.
And that was, that was dedicated to what particular thing then? The server or?
Server and some network equipment. But prices came in higher, so we really can't do the entire server project and the network project like we thought we could. So that's why we maybe need to change the scope for the project.
For next, 2023?
Yes, by next Thursday, 28th.
Why would we do that?
Basically request to move those 2022 funds over to what they can get for new equipment and reform the 2023 request for server, anything else.
Right.
But we have to act quick on that.
Why wouldn't? Is there something that I'm missing here? It seems pretty clear to me that.
I would say it would make sense. Yeah, change the scope and then concentrate on the server project for 2023. Whatever else we maybe, maybe we can get someone to come in and do a security assessment really quick and figure out, you know, if you want cameras for Jim, do you need anything out of the shop? I don't know if you have cameras there or not.
Cameras in back would be good. In fact, Paul and I talked about this morning about adding a fence. Some good, some good cameras. We've had some cameras back there, but they're very low quality, just starting up again and stuff. Like there's a lot of, there's thousands of dollars of material there.
So if you change the scope, Joe, and you move the server basis of 2023, and you said there was networking things that could be done, is there stuff we could do with this year's grant that would fit? And then just move the server, just the server part on the next year?
Definitely. We would change the scope to remove the server project from 2022 completely, which would free up $12,500. And then we re-scope the contract for the grant application. We're gonna replace the laptops, three docking stations, whatever else we may need. Maybe we even add some cameras this year.
With the 2022 funds?
Right, right. I don't think we should give anything back. I mean, it's okay to give a few dollars back. And if that's something you need, we need to coordinate. I can get the bids from, you know, the Wiskin website for the laptops. If I can get them from High Point, it doesn't matter, I mean, we get them. They're all, they're gonna spec the same. And then we'll see where we're at for dollars. And if that's $2,500 or $3,500, now we find more use for those funds. How about that? Not gonna waste it. I mean, even these tablets are probably getting end of life, so.
Joe, I think probably the confusion that came at the last meeting was it was just a bid that came in from Ben and none of us were aware of any of this besides that we applied for a grant back in 2022 for it, for a server, and that was it. So it looked like to us $7,500 payout to Ben to do a grant that we only got $12,500 for.
Yeah, I can see where it could look bad. I thought you broke it out by year, but.
It said per quarter, but it said three quarters. Well, it's $1,200 per quarter per. So it looked like to us, or it looked.
To me, I feel like it was a bill where you were checking to them.
For $7,500 to manage the $1,250 grant that we got.
Yeah, and I, I think the misunderstanding there is the 2022, all the work is pretty much done, other than this change of scope. And he can do that. But someone from the city just needs to send a note to Debbie Nicole and say, hey, it's okay for Ben to work on our grant. He'll help us change the scope. He'll also help us do the grant writing for 2023 and 2024. And artist city, I'd pay him the 25 for 2022. Pay him the 25 when the 2023 grant is done. And the 2024, 2024, that's what makes sense to me.
Because we did get, Sarah's on there currently, and I was on for another grant. So we were able to get 2022, 2022 grants cleared up and fixed. And then we started the process, because one of the new requirements is that MI, remember MI?
NDA.
That's kind of that.
It's the free security overview that you have to have. So we got signed up for that because you had to do it before October 1. Or that's when it starts?
Correct. And the assessment can't start until October 1. So until we do that assessment, we can't use those 2022 funds or the 23 funds until that's done.
But we did get the process started, so we're good there. And that was the email that I got, but I didn't get rid of them. If we already had, they wanted all, a monitoring for all of our in and out from all the networks. And that's what the IP word was for. But if you already have that set up, I don't think we have to do it. But if it's not set up, that's what that direction is for, is to go to their monitoring system. They just need those IP, it's set up through their. It was all explained in that email that I forwarded out to you.
Yeah, and that's just, that's just one component out of maybe 20 that we have to confirm. But we cannot start that process until October 1. Because last year's expired. And we can't get grant funds until that process is complete. But again, that's what Ben Gates is also gonna do for us. And just to confirm that, yeah, Ben Gates is the, he's the grant writer. He's, he's been doing this for years. I do IT. That's why we have to kind of work together to make it work. I can't do the grant. I maybe could, but it'd probably get turned down. He can't do the IT because he probably spec'd the wrong thing and it turned out to be the wrong verbiage. So that's why we're working together. And when this first started, I went to Ben, I said, I can't just let this money go. Can you help us apply for the City of Hillsborough? And he agreed to do it, you know, he paid a dollar for it. That's not right, not unless it worked for three, so. I thought his invoices were fair. They probably looked like they were in the wrong court where they were by year. Ben's helped do like five grants, or everyone's got approved. Courthouse is already done. The funds are expanded, the server's in place. It's like, those 40 grants. Grant to Calley, same way. City of Thompson, they're getting on board this year. We just gotta do it.
So you're saying that it's $2,500, you're gonna do this grant every year? That's what you're saying there?
That's right. $2,500 last year, we really shouldn't have applied for more. His amount wasn't gonna go up because the work doesn't change whether he applied for $30,000 or $300,000 really, right? So I, the way I explain it, I'd say, okay. They gave you $2,500, you gave me $12,000 back. We're gonna do that until I run out of money. I can run out, right?
So next year, it's a 20% amount?
20%.
And you, how much are you thinking that you would apply for? Just so we know, if we did this, how much the budget for, what would be that number we need?
Yeah, and if I had to tell you tonight, I would have to give you this server number because I don't, I don't know what else we're gonna do as far as cameras or security or keyless entry.
But if you had a guess at all, and guess high, so that, you know, how much total should we apply for on this grant? Is it gonna be $200,000 or is it gonna be $100,000, is it?
You said we could use it over the course of four years, right?
The projects have to be completed within a four-year period. But we have to identify the projects that we apply, so that's what makes it true.
I think, I'm just thinking of a rotation of equipment, like laptops here, that usually last six years if you're lucky. And so if we're to move this to 2022 and we do it in 2023, at the end of that four years, could we not change all those laptops again? So that they're new again within that four-year period?
That's a good question.
So you're going with that? I'm trying to keep them new with the grant each time.
You know, there may be a different grant by then. But I'm saying maybe under this grant, because it's for a year by five years, that they probably would turn it down.
So we need to critically think what. Other things besides server and security cameras?
So if we add a server, cameras, we have three office computers.
Aren't the office computers in the 2022?
If we moved it. There's five.
Keyless entries.
Six, seven of the surfaces.
A camera in, a camera in the suite hall, like in just the entryway. Because we just know, we have no security in there.
And then how many do you have, Jim over? Computers?
How many do you need?
Two in the office.
Just gotta do one for the water plant too, but. We could use two at the shop.
Oh, are, we have an old laptop too that would be replaced.
It's a spare.
It's a spare one? I don't know if you just keep it.
If you had desktops with, or if you had laptops with.
Yeah, it wouldn't matter.
So even if we planned $15,000 to $20,000, that would be plenty.
And you should hear me when I said a camera in the entry of City Hall? For that, but then you have a server.
No, $15,000 to $20,000 our share.
20%.
That'd be.
300? Well, that'd be 60, not 50.
Be $100,000. It'd be 20% of a.
20% of 100, yeah.
It'd be $100,000. Do they give you all or nothing, Joe? I mean, if you apply for 100, do they give you 15?
And you get to spend your per for, so, yeah.
We haven't had that happen, but.
Have you got some big ones like that? For cities, to be your daughter mom's?
County's tried, well, county was over 40. It's public information, so I, you know, I can share. And I think that, well, social services one was, I can look it up and get back to you, but I think it was like $150.
So you wouldn't be out of line?
No. Well, if you've got a purpose and you're gonna show improvement for your security, whether it's technology or safety or otherwise, you're most likely gonna improve it.
Makes sense.
I mean, we could, we could basically do some security at the water plant also. I mean, the lock systems are kind of, we're out there and there's cameras there too. I mean, it's in a rural area, probably that wouldn't hurt too, so.
A lock system, maybe?
Yeah. I like that idea that keyless.
Central.
Fobs.
Yeah.
We'd have to move pretty quickly to get pricing on some of that, but, you know, we can take a shot at it and worst case, you get, or let's just say, everything. It's $150 or $200,000. And that's by 2024, now we got more time to think about it. Let's just change the scope again. Things change as you go, and that's why they have that option to change the scope.
I think we want to get as much as we could this year, the 20% versus the prior year gets worse.
And, but you don't have to have the bids in the grant application, do you, or do you?
Just the dollars. We don't have to have bids, we have to have some idea.
A dollar. So if you said $25,000 for a security system, that's gonna have it.
Right, then you do, you figure out where you want to put that $25,000 that year. If you're still short of security, then you. Right, if you're still short of security, then you have the next year.
So with that, we have two things, possibly three to change. One would be, do we want to, first, if you want to hire Ben Gates to do the grant writing, all that, that we need a motion for that. And then second, if we're going to apply for this, and the dollar won't. And then third, if we're changing the scope with the 2022 grant.
And we will, and we will bend 2,500 for this year, or?
I don't know how he dated those invoices, but I would say.
He just dated it as one invoice that he sent back there, and it said for the next three quarters or next three cycles was all that I was giving.
Oh, I think he meant fiscal years.
That's what I, that's what I'm wondering, is clear that up?
I think it'd be reasonable to pay him the 25 for the work. And once this next obligation is done, just send your invoices again.
So what's three?
Yeah, just that. It says 2022, 2023, 2024, 2023, unit price 7,500.
So that would include 2024 as well?
Yeah, 2022, 2023.
So we paid 5,000?
We paid 2,500 now. 25 up for the.
22 or?
That would be the 22. 22 is when, when he finishes, that one is what, is what you're saying, when he finishes it, give him the 25, and then when he finishes the 23, give him 25. And then when he finishes the 24, or?
That'd be my recommendation, but the 2022 is pretty much done outside of change of scope. So I would, I would think hearing that by now.
Right.
Well, if you look at the promotion, we can motion pay him that 2,500 then too. And then we would hire to do the grant writing for 2023, then?
Makes sense. 2024.
And we can do 2024 too if you want.
I think there was confusion there that we didn't know that Ben did that for us. That's where there was some. But move by Paul, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Nicole.
Just quick, for, if you, we do request these laptops and stuff for the 2022, are they going to question if we need more laptops for the 2023 then?
If you just have to put it in your scope, what is the reason we need these laptops? The three now or four, we're replacing four, three end-to-life desktops and whatever else. That's what we, we just explain it that way. And in the next grant period, you might have other needs. And like, who knows, you might have a new employee, a new office or something. Or you're taking over a grant program for someone, you might have other needs. You just put that in there. We don't, we can't see what's going to come in 25.
Is there any other discussion on the motion to hire Ben Gates to pay for 2022, 2023, and 2024? And the DES cybersecurity graphics? Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any asks for me, motion carries? Next thing is, are we going to apply for the 2023 grant? And then how much are we going to go up to?
What'd you come up with at all?
Well, if we did 100,000, that would, basically we'd be spending 22,500. With Ben's fees.
And that can be spent over the course of the four, four years? Do you say 5,000? 100,000?
100,000, yeah. Because our share would be 20.
And you got 100,000 off that one?
Correct, if we, 20% would be 200,000, or 20,000 would give us 100,000 dollars in total.
So would we take that 20% off the top for our budget or divide that out over the four years?
We could probably put it on the top, as long as we look at it now to make sure that we get it in there.
Account for it, okay.
And the state's going to get in more by 5%.
Which is actually not 20%, that's a little bit less, yeah. I didn't do perfect math, I just get this close.
So you are looking for a motion for 100,000?
Or if you want to do more, that's fine, I'm just, you know, let's do it.
I don't know if you need to do more?
Whatever your math's up to.
Yep. It might look about 75,000, but if we can put in keyless, yeah, makes sense then. Okay, I'll make motion to move applying for the 2023 grant to 100,000.
Is there a second? Move by Nicole, seconded by Jason, to apply up to 100,000 for the 2023 grant. Is there any other discussion?
Makes sense, Joe.
It does, we still have to identify the components, like.
And should have a list kind of started on that?
Yeah, I think we have a good idea.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any asks for me? And then last, are we switching the scope? And if we switch the scope, then we would move from computers to probably replace all the office and the shop, the two shop computers on 2022s. And then we could put the rest of the server, the camera, commissioners, tablets, and security at both buildings, or all three buildings onto that next year. If that's what you would choose to do.
Yeah, because you can get about three for the office and two for the city.
Right, but the 12,000, that should be fairly.
That should come out pretty good. So I'll make a motion to move the 2022 to apply for, or excuse me, to apply the funds of 20,000, 12,500 for three 300 Thunderbolt and high-end laptops and two city shops. Right, laptops, two there.
With the docking station.
Could you change the scope of that?
No, I don't.
They don't have a share drive.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Move by Nicole, seconded by Jason. That we change the scope of the 2022 to five laptops for the shop and city hall. And then putting security system, server, alarm systems for all three buildings on the 2023 grant. That's all right. And the, oh, and the seven. Our seven that we have for the commissioners. And JR, and the one that we have here, that's where we're seven.
We have that laptop.
Sarah wants to continue to use two or not, but.
So continue to use these two?
Yeah, they do, they're the same. I mean.
Yeah.
Docking station, just pick it up and bring it over.
Yeah, absolutely.
Or whoever, you know. That's a better solution.
Absolutely.
Is there? All right, is there any other discussion? Say none, Nicole, Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any asks for me, motion carries? Anything else, Joe?
Just one more piece. I know the city's been, you know, shopping services a little bit, and I appreciate you guys' service over the years. I don't know if there's a service issue on my part, or prices are high, or if there's something else, but if somebody's unhappy with the service I'm providing, I think my services pay for themselves, not that expensive, really. And, you know, like, this is over and above this grant stuff. It's not my contract work, you know, and copyers, you know, I help get the best prices from vendors and things like that. So if there's an issue, you know, please let me know because I don't like getting it, you know, secondhand. And that's about it, you know? I've got others, like I said, City of Thompson is knocking on the door, saying, please come and help us. In this day and age where it's hard to find employees and good help, I think the two decades of work for the city speaks for itself, you know? Coming through, going to be the fifth auditor, holder commission again. A new attorney. So that's all I have. Thank you for your time, and any time I can help.
Thanks for taking the time to come.
Hey, Joe, this is.
It's Joe.
Okay, can we move on?
In respect to that, I feel if we get the commission and anybody's going around asking for bids without talking to them, I don't think that's right. I think we should go to our, do we have a contractor to trust in? I can say I've worked with Joe in two different agencies right now, and I've had great luck with him. He's been very reasonable, so I just think out of the respect for him, we should, if we do have an issue, we should let him know about it and discuss it. And not, not go asking if we haven't asked him. Because I know, like, the state grant stuff, he's 100% right. All he's doing is going off to the vendors that have done it, we deal with it all the time. So usually the state grant is the best price, so, and that's what they also recommend for the specs. So that's just my two cents.
Right?
I just wanted to say that I've worked with Joe for many, many years, when I was still a PD. He helped me get started on computers, and he does excellent work anytime you call him. I don't care, Derek, I was there. He takes care of everything, and I really appreciate his work, and I think he does a very good job for everybody. Thank you.
Ditto on that.
Just remind all of you that too, that it's also our duty to make sure that we look at all options. Not saying that Joe's done a bad job at all, but it is also our duty and our due diligence to make sure that, I don't know, Paul said it about other things, that we need to pull it out and make sure that we are finding it right. We are getting the right numbers and everybody's, it doesn't mean that we are changing at all, it just means that we're looking at. But it did, Jason.
It did not.
It did at the last meeting.
Unless I was under the wrong understanding, because you guys made it last meeting, I said, if you would like more than one, you reach out to Joe, because I meet with him in the next week. You were talking, I said, you were asking about, talking about getting extra stuff. I thought you were talking about getting a call for a cheaper server, maybe you're going a different route, and going through Joe for that, not to other companies. So if I was in the wrong and misunderstood you, I apologize, but that wasn't what I was saying it was okay to do.
But I think you misunderstood a little bit, but that was what, I said we were looking at these things, not saying that we are doing anything, we are looking. And I think it means a lot that Joe came up tonight to talk to us to clear things up, so I think that has helped a lot. Next we have is the budget. During next meeting, we do have our public hearing on the budget. So we want to make sure that we have everything in there. I will add in the 20,000 in the IT portion of it. To make sure that we have that covered. Jim, did you have any numbers that you got together yet?
For?
Any of the equipment or?
What I came up with was another farm truck that I always sold. We've been seeing a lot of them at that 20,000. I would like to go with a 30,000 dollar number in case we find something a little newer. And then I reached out to DOT on snowplows. And I think the prices came back down again on new stuff. He said that the most expensive one went for 30,000, but during COVID, I think he said they were around 50. So I was thinking if we could budget 40 for another snowplow truck. I don't know, I was still with Plows, but I think that number would cover that.
Was there anything else that you were looking at that you wanted?
As far as equipment, no, I don't think so.
There was some items that you had last year that we didn't purchase, or we just pushed those off.
Remember what they were?
There was a pickup.
Oh, pickup, yeah.
And then was there forks for the payloader? And then for grapples for?
Grapples, yeah. I don't have those numbers early either.
Well, it was in last year's budget.
Okay.
Plan for it.
Yeah, I think pickups were going for what, I saw 42 last year. I have no idea where they're, where they're at now this year. Because we had set initially, set up 30, and they, they were at 42, and we got a quote, the state bid.
Right. But are we still thinking, need a pickup in the next year too on rotation?
Well, it's, you guys, I mean, we're, we're trying to resurrect that old Chevy that, $2,000, two Chevy. Dependent on employment, too. I mean, yeah, we could use another pickup. I know we talked about use, but I didn't look at that, we just decided to put some money into that other one.
We could move the 30,000 that we had budgeted into the farm truck. For this year that we could put that, then we could put a pickup on for next year, James.
Okay.
And if we said 50 or 55, then we should be hopefully on the right side of the scale. That's on okay to everybody? So if we're going to do that, then I need a motion so that Jim can buy up to 30,000 for our truck. And then he had asked so that we can say yes ahead of time. How do we, instead of coming to the commissioner, are we authorizing up to 30,000? And have Dave sign off on it, or somebody else sign off, let you find one?
Okay.
If that works.
They come and go real quick, so.
Do you say 30?
30. Oh, we need a motion.
And that's all on this year?
That would be all on this year, if we move that pickup into the, to cover the farm truck.
I'll make a motion.
Nicole makes the motion to move the pickup fund into the, to purchase farm truck. And that will authorize up to 30,000, and then Jim and Dave can sign off on the approval of it and purchase it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Move by Nicole, seconded by Paul. Is there any other discussion? Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Anything else on the budget? That we need to add in or change?
When we do this next year, is there some of these that we can clean up, basically move to the general fund to make it less than negative while some of these funds out?
Yeah, you look. That was the, what I had tried to work on at the end was making sure that all the funds were at zero. Just trying to find the right, the last one I had. The general fund was zeroed out if I remember right. And that's not the, that's not the budget. The one that.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I'm just, I thought you were looking at something.
I was, yeah. I just wanted to make sure.
I was just waiting for you.
So yes, with it 100 would be zeroed out, 201 would be about $4,000 and the positive 206 would be $51.86 in the negative. 208 would be zeroed out, 209 would be $34,000, and positive 211 would be negative 234. 212 would be at 156 in the positive, 156,000. 213 would be $48,000 in the positive. 214 would be $18,000 in the positive. 215 is 317 in the positive. The only one that would be negative would just be that $51 in the 234, just smaller amounts. And our estimated final would be cash balance of 4.586 million.
What was that again?
4.586. And today we're at 4.2 right around there. Yes, that was the goal, was to try to get it done.
Yeah. Nice to see zeros.
But I'll make those changes. I know since I've copied a copy of the again that I have here. Everybody can look at it. Except the final budget is next meeting that we have to put in for. And that's when we're going to certify what our levy will be. Anything else on that? Next item is the liquor license renewals. And one for Tapak Goose River Bets Club and Casey's. We did not receive one from A and R. And all bills and lean and everything else. There was not against any of these businesses if they're anywhere.
No, not as far as I know.
And do I have a motion to approve the four liquor licenses as submitted?
Looks off in order. We're not missing anything on, we're not missing anything on the paperwork.
There was Goose River Brewing didn't drop, didn't have in their packet the health inspection certificate or certification or whatever it's called. But he emailed that to me today and it should be in your folders. So that was the only thing that was missing in the packet.
I think he didn't mark what he wanted either.
Yes, so we got that figured out.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Move by Nicole, second by Nicole to approve the liquor license for Tapak Goose River Brewing Bets Club and Casey's as submitted to the office. Is there any other discussion? Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Next item in business is Jody Gilberson with Chicken Scratch.
Hi. Um, my mom passed away in April, the 17th. And all summer, we had planned on having two or three online auctions. I've been, I've signed a contract with Jonathan Norberg from North Country Auctions out of Mandville. But trying to get all the legal paperwork so I could be the administrator of her estate since she, that's all she has is the building and what's in it. I finally just got that approved in the middle of August, maybe toward the end of August. But I still don't have the actual letters of general administration, whatever that is. So I can't sign a deed and, but I can go ahead and work on getting rid of the stuff that's in the building and then hopefully the building itself. Um, I do have a possible buyer for the building. And if he went, if they go through with it, he would pay the back taxes and cover costs of any repairs that would be needed to be done right away. Or I would hope, maybe if I could get an extension of time till the end of November so that the auctioneer can start. He would probably, if it gets approved, have a dumpster put out front. Sometimes we can start the process. And he figured it would take two or three auctions to get rid of all the stuff. And then we'll go, we'll deal with the building separately unless we can find a buyer for the building.
Jody, thank you for showing up. I appreciate that. You've been working with us. That's all we have ever asked. And I'm sorry to hear about your mom.
Thank you. We tried to, we tried to get her to do different stuff, like get the auction set up, but it wasn't working. So now it's up to me to try and get the building emptied and sold or whatever I have to do to afford it. To me, it's just an anger around my neck that's hurting. I just want it done. So the, if we have the auctions and the building does not get sold, then I would turn over the deed to the city to do with the building as they want. Because we don't have a way of fixing what needs to be done. And I have a brother and a sister and they've both given me permission to do what I seeked. And none of us really want the building. So, but we would like to empty it first. There is some, I had to put it in probate in the state of Minnesota where mom lived. I opened a probate case and Medicaid, we had $1,260 for reimbursement. Storage units, we owe 3100 or 310. And then she owes an old bill for a dumpster that she'd gotten from before for about 500. The taxes would probably be about 2200. And then 127 for putting an ad in the index in Norman County listing that, or for creditors. And then whatever else, bills come in. But as far as I know, that's pretty much everything she owed. So we don't, I've been doing all of the work myself. I have not hired a lawyer. I can't hire a lawyer. So with the help of Minnesota and North Dakota, they've been kind of pointing me which way to go. And so now what I'm asking from you guys is an extension of time so we can get this done. If it wouldn't have taken so long to deal with getting approved, I had started in Trail County, because that's where the property is, and had to send for notary, sign papers from my brother and sister to allow me to be the administrator. And then when I went to apply for it, they said, no, you got to do it in Minnesota because she lived there. And then I have to start all over again with Minnesota. But so now we're finally getting to the end of the legal work. And if I can get, um, if I can get the auctioneer starting this week, we could be done by sometime in November. And then he would auction the building or if we have a seller or a buyer, I mean.
So you're thinking November would be your?
No, later than the end of November.
So if we gave you till the first of the year?
Absolutely.
And if you didn't?
Then I would gladly sign over the lease and.
I don't think.
I know you guys don't want it either.
But at least come back and if you have another plan.
Yes, yes. Definitely, definitely.
Would the commission be okay with that to give her till January 1 of our first meeting in Noah, January of 2024?
Mom, very sorry to hear about your mom.
Thank you.
I always round town after, during my lunch hours to get donuts, get them before they were gone. So I have a special place in my heart for memories with her. I, I know it's difficult through having such a short time period after losing a loved one. I don't think the process has been easy since April. And I think that, you know, there's a lot of things that get tied up in states and it can take a longer time than when you originally anticipated to. I have no problem making a motion to extend you out.
Thank you.
January 1st of 2024. If there's issues, just come back.
That's wonderful.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Move by Nicole, seconded by Paul to extend out. Is there any other discussion? Say none, we'll vote. Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries.
Thank you. It's been interesting to say the least. So thank you.
The MREF school program, Paul?
Yeah, the same thing we did last year. It's a little less than cost. I think it's around that $30. First student, they change bill, they do have a little iron in your packets. And it just claims what it is. Those of you that break out my shit is, it's pretty much the same process. It's a different program. The cost is a little bit less. There's about 32 kids. So it'd be that that they do demonstrate. So it'd be a private estimate of $1,000 for us to do this. So I guess what I'm looking for is a motion to, or I'll make a motion to, go ahead and with this Smart Energy Squad program that goes to fifth graders. I don't know if anybody has any questions. Their cost, they're willing to do it again. And I think it's, there's a lot of different things for doing it too. So it's gonna help in educating our students in Missouri River. They paid for half of this program. So it's not a lot of cost.
Okay. We have a motion to approve that. And last year it went over well. Let's start it.
Well, I didn't really hear anything bad about it. I didn't hear anything, but they're willing to do it again. So I don't know if it's because it's a different program and they're willing to try it. I don't know if either one of the teachers is gonna do it. I just talked to John, so.
You said the fifth graders had to do it?
Yeah. Do you have a fifth grader?
I don't. I have a fifth grader, yes.
A fifth grader?
Yep. Is there a third quarterback?
Quarterback, is it? Is there?
It makes a lot of work to the parents.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Move by Paul, seconded by Nicole to approve the Smart Energy Squad program for Missouri River. Is there any other discussion? Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. We have two snow removal beds and one cemetery mowing. Do the cemetery first. We have Darryl Crowder. This commits a bid of $7,500 per year for the next two years for cemetery lawn care.
Is that us for storing them?
Cemetery.
Cemetery.
Lawn care. I did the easy ones first. And I assume that would not be for weed control and just before the mowing.
Yes.
Would we like to accept bid or reopen?
How long will we have to open?
Two, two weeks. It's been, it's been in the paper two, two times.
So we messed up. Did it at the end of August?
Yes, August 20th, I think it was.
And what was the last one?
It was right around that.
I think we were paying like 1,800? No.
1,300? We paid monthly.
Yeah, we paid a monthly. So from like April to like, so just October, I believe, yeah. I think it's right around that. It was on last April. It's like 12 something.
The 7,500.
Yeah.
So what's our options? Accepted or?
Accepted or we can read it. We can open it up for bids again.
Thoughts? Jason on the cemetery?
I don't know if we can put it back out if it would help or not. Last night, I think we had two.
Just two things come in?
Yeah, two of them.
I just feel like one in the winter. I don't know if anyone's really gonna be paying attention to lawns and over digging. So it's, we need something to move forward with.
It's totally up to you guys.
Put it in the budget early.
I'll make a motion to move ahead with the bid on this lawn care.
Darryl Crowder? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Probably going to second accept the bid from Darryl Crowder for 7,500 to do the cemetery's lawn care. Any other discussion?
I think that somebody from the city or somebody has to make sure they go and make these new, when they've never done them before, make it clear to them what's expected. I don't know who we can have do that. But somebody needs to, because we did have some problems with the last one initially, getting them on track. So I think we need, I think somebody needs to talk to them that knows what the expectations are. So that they don't say, well, I didn't know that type of thing. Because, you know, when we had them one last time, when they first started, I don't think they realized what the expectations were. And I was on cemetery at that time. And I was on cemetery at that time when I started and there was a lot of unhappy text messages to me, you know. So I just, I just want to make sure that anybody knew regardless who they are, knows what the expectations are. I don't know who that person would be to do that, but I don't know what the expectations are out there. And my expectations would probably be a lot higher than most, so they probably wouldn't want me out there.
I thought you were volunteering.
That's why I was.
You're probably quit after the first day. Why aren't you wearing hats and these people?
Oh, my gosh.
Probably moved to seconded. Is there any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me? We have two beds for snow removal. This would be at City Hall and the armory. And the helipad. Wayne Manthe submitted a bid for hourly. Loaders gets their houses $100 per hour and then snow blowers and shovelhead is at $60 per hour. Pulse and gravel submitted a bid from October 1, 2023 to May 20, 24. It's a two-year bid is what we had asked for, but it's $150 per hour for pulse and gravel.
Did Wayne Manthe put in what his timeline, like was he October 3, 2, or it's just whenever the snow hits call?
Yes, it's just whenever the snow hits. He didn't put a timeframe on it. We have the same options again. We can accept one of the bids or we can open up for bids again.
Wayne's been doing?
Wayne has been doing it the last two years.
They're doing a satisfactory job.
Is it okay to talk?
Well, you're at City Hall.
Right.
You'll probably ask Jim next. So you have a time to think about your answer?
Well, the last two winters that I've been at City Hall, I know the city has cleaned our sidewalks in front of City Hall and in front of the community center here. Because they haven't been done, so they were outdoing it before Manthe's even got there. That's just my take on it.
City Hall staff?
Yes, City Hall staff too.
Just saying, we shoveled the lot last winter. I think it's not that he does a bad job. He just, I think he took on too much. But it was frustrating when you're crawling on your knees trying to get into that building, especially the back door.
And the back door was never done. We always had to do that.
Truth on Trump. You probably know more about that.
Did you ever make contact with him about that?
I thought it was in my best interest that Mike usually did it. He had a better rapport with him and I was usually a human man by the time I got to work. It was his best idea.
I don't, we, we kind of had a, I think an agreement that whoever got to the buildings first would do it. I guess I'm just going to speak for the army. I never had any complaints about the army.
I think maybe that goes back to the expectations or, but we had a lot of snow last year too, which really pushed a lot of people back in the beginning to places too.
Maybe we should just ask Wayne if we go with that bid. Or with the other one, the expectation is, is at least get a path in the front and the back by 7:30.
Because we do have customers that come.
Move it some on the priority list maybe.
Doesn't have to be completely done, but it's.
Just a path.
Yeah, just a path. It doesn't have to be all the way up to the door, just get it all the way so you guys can get in.
As long as you don't call us to do it, wouldn't you like?
Come on. You still should.
Top 745, you know.
But again, like Paul said, we have to make those.
Make those expectations. I don't know, if there's somebody in the audience that needs to retire, they probably would volunteer this time to come up.
And maybe we just.
I mean, I don't think I heard a schedule yet, so.
And maybe when we, if we send a letter saying that the bid has been accepted, we can say these are the things that are expected. On the mowing one, we can say that we do a walk through what works to set it up at the beginning of the year so everybody knows. Or this fall if they want to do it this fall. I can work with Sarah to come up with a letter to send and then we can send it out quick so everybody can see it. As long as you're okay with it, we can send it. Whoever gets both bids. Do I have a motion to accept or?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by, Jason, is there any other discussion?
Just making sure that what the expectations are included in that. And I don't know where, it'll be a matter of asking where, how they kind of figure, okay, whether we figure instead, should we 100 on the list or we, you know, where we file on the list, you know, where we at? It's a priority, so.
But I think I would say at least on there to get the, a path to the armory opened up. And the path here by opening time for both.
Makes sense.
And then we've always said the helipad has to be as much of a priority as we can. Okay. Any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me? The WAPA rec DE contract. We just need to approve that. That's a yearly thing. There's a copy in your packet that Sarah will sign off on it. They sent it to me to sign as the seconds of the year.
Will you sign off on it?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Nicole to sign the WAPA agreement. Is there any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Next, we have the Renaissance show, an application for probable properties. And I think there's a tax exemption on it too.
Yes, there is.
So the, looking at the Renaissance zone. You had, the current value is 2,770, correct? And it was 70, $7,700 in improvement is what you're saying?
Roughly, yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, JR, it has to be on a business, it has to be 50%. And it's supposed to be submitted before anything's done. So unfortunately, we can't move forward on the Renaissance zone application. Because it has to be a 50% improvement.
50% to.
To move forward.
Of the total value.
Of the total value.
So if you know what that is and then take what you have for renovations.
There could be additional renovations. There's potential asbestos tiles, so we can look at removing those and that would be additional.
Yep.
So we, we can get a better pricing on that.
But just make sure you do it before any work is done too.
Yeah, just get the bids and stuff of what all the work is and what it costs to do it and it's 50%.
Is that correct, JR? And then on the new and expanding business, this one might take a little bit more work from JR. So I think we ran into this before because it's not.
Well, this is the one you have to have it certified as a magical language word from.
Right.
I gotta look and see what the word is, but I think it's primary sector business. It has to be certified by the Department of Commerce. So we have to take that application, submit to Department of Commerce, have them certify it, then have decided between those two competitors. Then see if we approve it. I will note they're pretty stringent on what the decides a primary sector business. Generally think of a battery.
An industry.
Yes, and you can actually add in value is the term they use. So, but we could definitely submit the application to the Department of Commerce and see their thoughts. So that's our next step.
Great. With that, I think now that we've had a couple that came across, maybe I missed this before, but it does read in the legislation for property tax exemption. I mean, I don't believe that we've done this, but we could do this. City or county with fewer than 40,000 population may grant an exemption to a project operating in a retail sector if the governing body has obtained approval from majority of the qualified electors voting on the question at the city or county election held in conjunction with the statewide general election. And if that governing body has established by resolution or ordinance the criteria that will be applied by the governing body to determine whether it is appropriate to grant exemption for a project operating in the retail sector. The minimum criteria is in the North Coast Century Code. The city or county may not supersede or expand provisions of the section under home rule authorities. So we could open it up, but we'd have to throw in the ballot to do that. So whether that is something we want to do or not.
Yeah, that's kind of a question for us in the ballot. That was added when they put Walmart in Mandau because it's technically a retail business, not a primary sector business. So if that's something we'd like to do, it disqualifies as a retail business.
But we'd have to go to the voters first and approve it and put it in our ordinances. So we can send it out to Commerce now, but I'm thinking ahead in the future if we want to do that for other businesses. Or you in the future.
Retail sector.
But JR can work on, with Commerce and Sarah, on your application to see how they would move forward for you.
Okay.
And there's nothing we can decide tonight.
Yeah, if, if we need to overlook at some numbers and let you guys know, because this is just like the bare basics of some of the improvements that we wanted to do, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. So we can, we can easily find to get it up to that 50%.
That's what I'd say to do for the Renaissance zone, because then we can approve that at the next meeting.
Because it's.
It may not be in the power.
Right. The floor in the northwest or northeast corner is kind of janky, so that can be jacked up. The asbestos tiles, I mean, there's, there's a laundry list of things that can be improved on, so.
That would be your easiest option to get it. If you got it above 50%, then we can. Do you get a tax exemption on whatever the improvements are? Is that if I remember it?
Should be the full property. There's also income tax exemptions too, so it's a better one.
Up to $500,000 per county or is it?
I have to see the numbers, I know it's only income tax exemption, so.
Correct, it's, it's up to $500,000.
So add some zeros to your application, we'll see you in two weeks.
We'll, we'll resubmit. Because one of the things that we found from Nikki too is that we can't sign a lease with any of the tenants until the Renaissance grant gets approved. So right now, we technically don't have any tenants. So we'll get that submitted and then look at the tenants situated.
Okay.
That's what we found out from Nikki, so.
Okay. So you don't want us to do the tax, we'll just go for the Renaissance? Is that correct?
No, I think.
Or you want us to try for tax? You can't, right?
It's, it's two exemptions covering the same property, so.
Right. So we'll, we'll not move forward on the, on the tax exemption. We'll wait for you to come back from the Renaissance, because you can't do both.
Correct.
So, okay. So we don't have to, you're off the hook, JR.
There we go. Change my statement as quick.
But then it comes us back to the other question on the tax exemption. Is that something to look into? And then start to pick them up back with GPC or HBA and see their feeling on it and how we want to move forward if you want to do that. Paul, your thoughts?
I don't know any more. It seems like JR does and he's on HBA, so.
You're outside. What are your thoughts?
I don't know, how much would be used?
That is the question. What's the next retail business that's going to come in tails run? Because Dog General just came in, that would count as a retail business, we could give a property tax exemption to under that. What's the next one?
Does it have, it doesn't have to be new, it could be a remodel though too, correct?
Uh, new, well, new or expanded.
Or expanding.
I believe it's the, could, could be a new blueprint to example, Dog General, but.
Or it could be if the drugstore wanted to expand or the cafe wanted to expand.
Correct. JR, can I trip the cafe account as well? They do a retail sales mark, but I don't know how they define retail. Believe it has to be majority retail, because food and account is retail.
One of our potential tenants is going to be full retail. So I guess with that, because according to the, the one that handles the Renaissance at the state level, they said that to apply first and then once ours gets approved, then they can submit theirs. And then theirs would have to be approved before the lease is signed.
Correct. Okay. So then it's a possibility if there is one coming in, but we have to take it to vote then.
But we'd have to have it to vote and then, okay. Do we get it on the November ballot?
I have, I'd have to look, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure either.
Because we're looking to try to get them in there and, and full retail set up by November 1st, so they can start selling by November 1st.
So I think it's normally 90 days?
Usually.
So then no, we want to have time to get out because it would have been September. So we can possibly look at June would be the earliest.
Definitely not by November, but not by November for retail, that is.
Because for us to do retail, we have to go into a vote on the public to say that, yes, they will approve us to do retail. Because we currently don't have that unless Commerce lines off on it, the business as primary sector, if that makes sense. We have the liquor transfer for the Bets Club on.
What's in your bag?
Motion to approve the yield of the transfer to the Armory on October 30 for the Bets Club.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Nicole and Paul. Is there any other discussion? Say no, proceed to vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion here is. Chris, do you have anything else? Do you have to say anything?
I'll be in a minute.
Oh. So I tried reaching out by text to Emily and I haven't heard back from her. I know Dave's not here tonight, so I don't know that we want to make it just, I don't feel comfortable without getting in touch with Dave on how we'd like to move forward. If you want to hear. I'd also like to reach out to her just to make sure something did happen before we made a decision. I will try to call and if we don't hear anything by tomorrow afternoon or Wednesday morning. What are your thoughts?
When does Dave get back?
Dave, he's bad, he's sick. What are your thoughts, submissions? On how to move forward on the auditor opening?
Well, I guess I'd be concerned is why she wasn't able to make it. You know, if it's a legitimate excuse and can be rescheduled, I wouldn't mind doing that. But maybe she's no longer interested. I don't know. And that would change how we move forward with it.
Right. Here's Dave. Hello? You're on speaker, Dave.
Okay.
Hopefully you're feeling a little better.
Oh, wait, Paul is done.
I am done.
It's lagging behind a little bit, so...
Is he there?
Yep, we're here. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Whenever you're ready.
I agree with you, just... I agree with you, just get hold of her and see if there was an emergency or something and then...
Okay.
And that's my feeling. Yeah, we're here. Whatever.
Okay. Anything else, Dave?
Nope, that's it.
All right, thank you.
Yep, bye bye.
All right, so I will, we'll reach out to her and find out. And I'll let you guys know tomorrow, Tuesday, or Wednesday morning at the latest what happened. And then if needed, we can have a special meeting to decide what we're gonna do. So if that's the case, we could look at Thursday or Friday, I would assume, possibly.
Thursday would...
You're gone.
The MRS conference.
Oh, yeah. When are you back, Paul?
Not till next week. It's Thursday, Friday.
So we probably have to wait until Monday then or Tuesday next week. Sorry, that's where we're... We do the same thing for you if we didn't.
I appreciate hearing that. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order, for the public? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn? All those, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
I move.
Second?
Second. Second?
Probably moved and seconded by Nicole and Paul. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anything else?
JR. I've been here a lot, and we never let me take a moment.
I know, right? I'm the first.